Please enter your access code followed by the pound or hash sign. To enable audio controls, please enter your audio PIN followed by the pound or hash sign. If you do not have a PIN, just...
This is Commissioner Keenan Rattell of Montezuma County. Who do I have on the line?
Yeah, Stephen Kennedy, sir.
Okay. Stephen, you're with the tower company?
Yes, I'm a consultant on the radio engineer for the tower company.
Okay. All right. We're going to be reviewing a high-impact permit and special-use permit for this Horizon Tower. Ms. Shelley Neese was here two weeks ago, and we discussed some options with her, and wanted to have a conversation with you, the engineer, and hopefully with the Horizon Tower people about a possible relocation of that tower. So can you kind of give us a background or a scenario?
Shelley Neese from Horizon Tower is also supposed to be conferencing in.
Okay, Shelley, Shelley, are you on the line? She was supposed to be entering this. Yeah, she was. Well, we're not quite to 2:00, so we'll give her a minute.
She just sent me an email. She's trying to call in right now.
Okay.
I have a public hearing notice. Right? This is...
Just a continuation.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, continuation.
It's a continuation. Okay. So you want me to...
Yes, go ahead, Kim. Please reopen the public hearing.
Commissioner Rattell.
Present.
Commissioner Sukla.
There.
Commissioner Candelaria.
Here.
Administrator Powers.
Here.
Attorney Baxter.
Here.
And Kim Purcell, Montezuma County Clerk and Recorder. Notice is hereby given that the Montezuma County Board of County Commissioners will be reviewing and determining a proposed high-impact permit and special-use permit submitted by Horizon Tower, Agent Shelley Neese from Primera, for the purpose of developing a new wireless telecommunication facility and 100-foot monopole tower on property located at 6991 Road 24.3 Cortez, Colorado, consisting of 4.42 acres, more or less, located south of Road G, west of Road 24.3, situated in Section 10, Township 35 North, Range 16 West, and NPM. The hearing will be held Tuesday, May 28, 2019, at 2:00 p.m. in the Commissioner's Hearing Room, Montezuma County District Courthouse, 109 West Main, Room 250, Cortez, Colorado. Interested persons may attend and give input. Information may be obtained from the Planning Office, Room 270, District Courthouse, Cortez, Colorado, or accessed online at http://montezumacounty.org/web/departmentsplaning. You may also contact the Planning Department at 970-565-2801 with questions. This file can be inspected in the Planning Department during regular office hours dated this 13th day of May, 2019. Kim Purcell, Clerk, Board of County Commissioners, Montezuma County, Colorado. And I believe it was published...I don't have that information when it was published.
That's okay. Did you note who was on the phone?
I do have Mr. Stephen Kennedy, a consultant for Horizon Tower.
Has Shelley joined us yet? Hello?
I don't think she's here yet, sir.
Okay. All right. Don, you and Jane want to revisit what we had with this?
That's probably her.
Shelley here.
Shelley, okay, thank you for joining us, Shelley. We just reopened the public hearing and are beginning our discussion on the proposed tower, so...
Okay. I'm clicking up "Go to Meeting Now," so...
Could you repeat that? You're breaking up some, Shelley.
Is this better?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. I'm clicking into "Go to Meeting Now," but I can go ahead and...would you like me to start?
Sure, go right ahead.
Okay, so on the phone with me, Steve Kennedy, are you there?
Yes, yes, he's here.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. So Steve Kennedy, I'll let him do his own intro in just a moment, but he's part of the AT&amp;T Wireless team out of the desert southwest. He's an independent contractor who specializes in RF engineering, and they utilize him to do a lot of their design work and services. And he also does independent work for Horizon Tower. In this capacity, he's speaking on behalf of AT&amp;T Wireless. So basically, in our last discussion, we had talked about on Dirk Johnson's property, the proposal for a 100-foot tower, which the antenna is to be mounted at about 96-foot rad center, and that would be a monopole. And previously, we received unanimous approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission, but we then needed to go before the county, Montezuma Council, to discuss the proposed tower. And I think we left it with...I think we had addressed everything, but there were a couple commissioners, and I'll bring up my notes and remember your name, gentlemen. But with that being said, Steve, they were asking some questions about why we could not locate the dump property, which I sent you details on, which was about 2 and 1/4 mile or thereabouts, towards the northeast, as I recall. And it was a higher elevation.
Southeast.
And was it southeast? My incorrect...
Southeast.
Southeast. Sorry about that, yeah. It is right in my notes. I had the detail when I sent it to Steve, and we discussed it, and it's on the plots that I gave you when we were there last. So Steve, the concern here was a couple things. One, that they had previously had some internet company with the state of Colorado come through, and it provided...it was supposed to provide services to the community, and they provided it to other portions of Colorado, and these folks never got that service. That's a little different than what we're doing. We're a privately-held company that offers public utility services and is regulated by the FCC. So in that capacity, I think we had a discussion explaining that. But in addition to that, they still had concerns about why we couldn't locate on that dump property. And I explained to them that I'm not a design engineer, and that the coverage objective here wouldn't be met if we moved the site that distance away. And so because on that day, I had only found out a couple hours earlier, and was able to make a few phone calls, even though we did address it in the meeting, they'd asked for more detailed explanation. So I'm going to leave you with that. A couple of things, Steve. One, I explained to them this is FirstNet project, that what that project is, as far as being funded by the government, that AT&amp;T had won the contract. I know this is a capacity site, but in addition, those emergency services are key to this community, and so I want you to speak...
Hello? Did we lose you? Is anybody there?
I'm here.
Shelley, did we lose you?
Yeah, we lost...yeah, she beeped off. I heard it go "doo-doo."
Yep.
If you want, I can go ahead and kind of start, if you want. Do you guys have the PDF that I sent?
Yes, we do.
We do.
Can I ask you a question first, Steve?
Hold on a second, Steve. Commissioner Sukla has a question for you.
Yeah. So the purpose what she had said was that it was for emergency purposes and for better connection. We've talked with our emergency, our first responders, and they all said that they had great reception in this location. Go ahead now.
I dropped off, but Steve, it was with you. Yeah, so we started, Shelley, so I'm going to continue on. And I will answer your question in turn with what I'm discussing. So the original reason that AT&amp;T designed this site, NML 06142, in the southwestern side of Cortez, or just outside of Cortez, was for capacity. So that's the original guise that this search ring or this location request was made, was for capacity. So I'll give you a quick explanation between coverage and capacity. So coverage is just putting up a transmitter so you can actually make connections between wireless devices back to a tower. I would relate that to, if everybody...I'm guessing a lot of people have Wi-Fi at home, so if you put an access point in your home, you have coverage, right? If you don't have an access point in your home, you most likely don't have coverage. So that's a coverage-type issue. Capacity is one step further from that. And let me...I kind of use an everyday scenario. I call it the Thanksgiving Principle. So capacity is, let's say you have a Wi-Fi access point at your house, and it's you and your significant other, and it's located in such a way you have coverage in your house and you have pretty good throughput, so you don't buffer on Netflix, you have good email access, you can get to the website you want to get to, and everything's pretty fast, and the screen's not slow, all that kind of stuff. But let's say Thanksgiving comes around, and all the family shows up, and what happens? Everybody wants your Wi-Fi access code. And then all of a sudden, you start to see, oh, things slow down. Netflix buffers a lot more, websites don't load, webpages don't load quite as fast as they're used to, things of that. That's because there's more users on the same radio channel, so it's a finite resource. So what we're running into, and what AT&amp;T is running into in southwest of Cortez, is the amount of radio channels being utilized, i.e. the amount of customers or users that are within that area using the system, are exceeding what the site can handle. So there has to be a split, or a capacity cell split, to take and offload some of that traffic from the site to the north, which is NML 00846. I think you can see it on Page 4 of my presentation. So what we're trying to do, and your first responders are correct, there's good coverage already in that area. What we're trying...what AT&amp;T is trying now to resolve is the amount of capacity, the amount of throughput per user. So let's say, and we relate it to a water pipe. So if you have a water hose or water pipe, and one person's taking a drink from it, they have access to that full pipe of capacity. They have access to all the water. But if 15 or 20 users come in and they're all sharing, pulling water from that same pipe, the amount of water per user is significantly reduced, so the throughput or the flow is reduced. That's what's going on right now in the southwestern side of Cortez, is the amount of throughput per user is being significantly reduced because there's not enough capacity or radio resources to be able to provide those connections. So AT&amp;T Engineering designed a cell split, NML 06142, to the southwest of Cortez because the antennas that face that area, down at Highway 160, are becoming overloaded, so they needed a cell split to handle and offload some of that traffic. So it's not a coverage, per se, that's the requirement. It's more of the capacity or number of users being served. And why it goes in that area is because, well, predominantly, most of the traffic is along US Highway 160, around the airport, southwestern, southwest of Cortez, around the Montezuma area. That's where the capacity is being done, because that's where all the people are. That's where the capacity is being utilized. And we all know that everybody has those smartphones now. I know I have three teenagers now who have a smartphone, and I wish I never gave them one, but they have one anyway. And everybody uses those phones inside, outside, everywhere, they're always with them, and those phones are always doing something in the background. Hence the need for capacity in that southwestern area. So relative to the Commissioner's question about the first responders saying there is coverage, yes, there is coverage, for the AT&amp;T existing subscriber base, the engineers don't show enough capacity or enough radio resource to be able to process the calls the way they need to be processed, or give the users the speed they need. So that's the reason why the NML 06142 was put more towards 160, and we try to get the site where the subscribers are, especially when it's a capacity site. I've been asked before, why can't we move this or that? In a variation of zoning hearings I've attended and provided help with, why don't we move it 2 or 3 miles away? Well, I kind of went a different way of that, said it's kind of like building your house and then putting your bathroom 2 miles away. It's not serving where the need is. The need is along Highway 160. The need is around Montezuma, southwest Cortez. It's offloading that sector of NML 008146 that's facing the southwest. While I can understand the Commissioner's current concerns about wireless internet and the ISP and the Internet Service Provider and things, and wanting to move more towards the landfill, things of that nature, but the need that AT&amp;T has is within Highway 160 southwest of Cortez. That's where their existing subscriber base is showing problems with processing the traffic as fast as it needs to be processed. Hence, that's the reason why you see the site to the west. Steve, can you speak for a minute towards two things? One, can you explain to them what will happen in the event of a major emergency if every one of their customers gets on the phone and starts calling their relatives, and what would happen with that first responder network, and how this FirstNet project with the government would put those first responders first? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Before he goes up...
Hold on one second, Steve.
I really feel like he answered that question. The question that hasn't been answered is the distance that it works for capacity at tower. You keep saying that it's got to be right there along the highway, but you've never described with an elevation gain...I think Commissioner Candelaria has it...
310 feet.
310 feet. You haven't described a signal and the distance that it can travel. That's what I need. I understand what happens. I've got teenagers myself, and I understand when they throttle you down, so I understand that. What I don't understand is the signal and how far it reaches.
Okay, I can explain that. Let me answer that, then I'll talk about FirstNet secondly, okay? All right, so a radio transmitter, when an antenna goes up in the air and power's put behind it, it propagates based upon the frequency. So I'm trying to get an everyday look to try to explain this. So if that...okay, so let's go back to the access point in the house. If the access point is on the east side of the house, and you walk towards the west side of the house, and you're passing through rooms and walls, things of that nature, you're getting to the other side of the house, you're going to see that signal strength level drop on your laptop or your tablet or your phone in your house. That's propagation loss. The radio signal decreases over the distance. So for every time you double the distance, let's say you go from 1 mile to 2 miles away from the site, you cut that power by 75%, or it's a square, so it's 25% of the power left over. The farther away you get from that transmitter, the lower that signal level is. And as you get farther away, the tower, the antenna, does not hear the mobile as well. So you notice that when you get on...if you have an access point or your Wi-Fi router on one side of the house, and you go to the other side of the house, the signal level's much lower, and you notice that things slow down a little bit. The same thing, if you walk outside and you walk away from your access point, the farther you walk away, the lower that signal goes, the slower the access point responds, or the slower the webpage load, or Netflix buffers more, things of that nature. I know I'm using some kind of goofy ways to describe this, but it's just the way I can think I can explain it, and hopefully I'm doing a okay job.
You did a good job.
The same thing happens...sorry?
You did a good job explaining it.
All right, so what happens is, like, if you're standing in a parking lot, and you're talking to somebody right 5 feet from you, they can hear you well, you can hear them well. You stick them 500 feet away, and they talk at the same level, you're not going to be able to hear them very well. It's going to be very soft. They're going to have to get louder for you to hear them and them to hear you. That's power. That's the amount of energy it takes to do that. So if we have a fixed radio channel that has a finite resource, and there's an amplifier behind it, has a finite power, and there's a bunch of subscribers in the area, and let's say you put that site on the landfill, and it's having to service all of those subscribers over there off Highway 160, it's going to have to be very loud. The mobile units are going to have to be very loud, they're going to have to be powered up, and they're going to be talking to each other, screaming, and that's going to reduce the amount of capacity in there because everybody's getting loud. Kind of like a cocktail party. Two people walk into a room, a cocktail party, it's pretty quiet. Everybody can talk regular voice, no problem. What happens when 200 people walk into that same room? Oh, it's gotten louder. Since it's gotten louder, everybody's having to talk louder, so the other guy can hear him conversate. So it's harder, it's more noise, it's more interference. So between the situation of you've got the mobiles very far away, 2 or 3 miles, which that's okay, depending on the site, the configuration, like you said, 310-foot change in elevation between where the site is versus the landfill, yeah, that tower over in the landfill's going to cover a much larger area. But remember, part of that situation is we're trying to serve the subscribers, so we're trying to keep them as quiet as possible, as low-powered as possible, one, to save their battery life, two, to increase their throughput. So that's the scenario. The farther you get away from the transmitter, the antenna, the higher power it has to be, and the higher power the mobile has to be, and it causes interference within what's called the LTE network or the 4G network. So that's kind of the distance thing, and it kind of goes back to that whole thing. You want to put the site where the subscribers are. I'm sure you've heard of small cells in and about that are going up in the major cities right now. A small cell will cover maybe 2 blocks at most, and then once you're out of that 2 blocks, it's not covering anymore because it's so short, you can't see it, and it's working at such a frequency that doesn't propagate that far. It's kind of the same thing here. If you have... That discussion did come up. The 5G discussion did come up. I did explain to them this is not a 5G site. I explained to them the technology, why it's not, and why there's struggles with that system right now, because you have to put in so many at a much higher frequency. I think I said lower at the P&amp;D here, but it's actually much higher, I think it's 28 gig, right? And so that doesn't penetrate very far, so you have one every block, and you've got cost-effective issues, you've got coverage issues, you've got penetration issues, and this is not that site, this is a 4G site. Yeah, okay, keep going. So... All right, so if we go back and we look at, okay, like, let's talk about your first responders in the county. They maybe have 3 or 4 or 5 towers, I don't know, and they're covering very large geographic areas. But the amount of first responders you have utilizing that network are maybe 50, 100 users. I'm just guessing, I don't know off the top of my head, but just say a typical rural county. There's not a lot of users, and there's not a lot of sites, but it's covering a large area. Well, a site for AT&amp;T or any other wireless carrier that's operating on 4G is anywhere in the neighborhood between 200 users to 500 users on a site at any one time. And so it's a much greater density of utilization, or much denser subscriber count. So because of that larger amount of users, we try as radio engineers to get the sites, like, where the subscribers are, so we can give them the best chance, the best throughput, the best coverage, building, penetration, things of that nature. Does that answer your question?
It does mine.
It does mine, yeah. I understand what you're driving at and what your goal is and what you're striving to do here, and you obviously have reasons for why you want that tower there.
Okay. Now, let me talk about FirstNet, and then I'll expand a little bit about what the differences are. So FirstNet was created by the 9/11 Commission, right? Not all the first responders were working on the same network. This is a dedicated frequency or channel that first responders will have access to if they decide to buy in and pay for access to this network. So every site, or the FCC has allocated frequency bands or channels out to wireless carriers all over... Wireless carriers all over the...give me a second. Sorry. Okay. So they allocated...I had to get my admin to answer my phone. So they allocated a certain amount of spectrum or channelization for the wireless carriers, and they'll have a channel. And what they did for the first responders is they did the same thing. They allocated a special plot of license, I think it's the 700 megahertz block, I think it was D block. And that is going to be accessed by first responders on their network. Now, AT&amp;T has a system, and it's built in such a way, the first responders will share the same antennas as the public side of the network, but they will...only the first responders will have access to this radio channel capacity. And there's also some sharing going on, but suffice it to say, the dispatcher, if something happens, and there's something that causes a need where there's a lot of capacity, a lot of first responders are swooping into one particular area, the dispatcher will have the ability or access to be able to shed the public traffic, if there's any on that channel, off, and make sure it's fully dedicated to the first responders. So it's kind of the same network, it's the same set of antennas, it's the same sites, but it's a different channel. So it's like having a 2-story building, there's a whole bunch of public people working in the first and second story, and we add a third story to that building, and only first responders can get to that third story. That's basically what's going on with the FirstNet network. AT&amp;T has just been the winner of the bid with the FCC to...with the government to provide this network. And that's important, Steve, because one thing in this community is they have some areas, and in fact, they brought my attention to them, and I brought the attention to AT&amp;T to look at those. Obviously, you and I don't control how much money, which year it's spent, and which budget, but we do look at, I certainly do as an expert in what I do in the built-suit field, you know, where's the need coming? And so while no promises can be made, at the same time, they have dead areas in their community where they've had, you know, accidents or difficulty getting out, and that was one of their concerns, and like I said, we don't have the budget to just walk in and say, we're going to build those towers today. But if you could speak towards what the likelihood, not so much, you know, who's going to spend what, but what that process is in going out and building a network in a community, how you fill in those holes, just for a few minutes there. Okay, so there's 2 ways that carriers like AT&amp;T or Verizon or T-Mobile work. One is the coverage and capacity, what I related to you first. So typically, carriers will go in, and as they show a need for, there's a lot of complaints in an area, or there's an increase in subscriber count in this area, there's still a lot of phones, they need to add some service to an area, make coverage better on this highway. Let's say, you know, maybe 789 needs to have better coverage back to the east or something of that nature. They need to designate a search ring for that, and that comes under a coverage expansion or an increase of coverage or fill-in, things of that nature. Then there's the capacity side. That's what, you know, NML 06142 is, is there's existing base, and the network's not doing as well as it should, and there's a lot of capacity going on. About every year to 2 years, carriers come up with this forecast and budget and what they're doing. Now, what's been interesting for AT&amp;T is, and I can speak to this specifically because my company has been doing a lot of sit walks for new site builds in Arizona, areas where AT&amp;T does not have as good a service they wanted, and it was areas targeted by or identified by the first responders within the state, said, you guys need to make this better. So as part of this nationwide first responder network, you need to increase coverage in these particular areas because it's not strong enough for the first responders. So in the state of Arizona, they identified a lot of these areas, and AT&amp;T is now issuing rings and doing work to add coverage in these areas to build up the first responders' network. network. It's also helping their subscribers because they'll add their radio channels there as well, but it's helping the first, first responders relative to the county you're in or what the areas that you have concerns about.
This is Colorado, and just for clarification for the commission, the Arizona AT&amp;T market, we call that the Desert Southwest coverage.
Desert Southwest.
Your area, yeah, New Mexico, El Paso and Arizona. So your, your coverage is run out of that AT&amp;T office in Mesa, Arizona.
Mesa. So what happens is the, the first responders as part of the, as AT&amp;T got feedback from the state and local governments and from the federal government of, hey, you need to increase your coverage here and there, they started to add these search rings and they're targeted. And it's, it's the first, I don't know, I think there's three or four tiers of growth and expansion to handle this. And like Shelley said, that you, you passed her the information and if Shelley, if you want to pass the information to you, I can put that in the hands of the AT&amp;T RF engineer that designs this part of the network and make sure he knows of those concern areas. So when he's doing, when he's allowed to spend money in these particular areas, he'll know that, what targets or what problem areas that are a concern for the county and try to help get those higher up in the list.
Yeah, I had spoken with Don, but I'll, I'll speak with him more closely because I'm going to be out there for another site that we're doing in the area, but we'll speak more closely. I got them onto the PM, the project manager, but I'll get, get them to you as well.
Yeah, I can get along with the radio engineer.
Hey, Steve and Shelley, I think, I think we're getting a little bit off track here.
Okay, that's fine.
We'd like to bring this back to-
Give me for the question.
Yeah, we'd like to bring this back to the, the issue that we have on this high-impact and permit that you, you applied for. So, Steve, I think you did a great job of explaining the reasons for your capacity and your needs at this specific location that AT&amp;T needs for capacity, not coverage, and I think you did a good job of that. So is there any questions that the commissioners have of Steve or Shelley at this, at this point?
I have none, all of mine were answered. It is a 4G site, not a 5G site.
Well, I have a question.
Okay.
My question is, is, I believe you're putting all of the, the towers along the highways because of wireless cars in the future. I believe there's more to this. You look throughout the country and that is where they're, you're putting the, the towers is along the freeways because of the future of, of the, I say, call it wireless cars, the driverless cars. My question is, is there, which, that means nothing about what this hearing's about today, but what, but what does, what is important is, there's a test, it's called tested, and it's what commissioners, what counties can use to test broadband signal throughout the United States and you, you just, everybody can get it on their iPhone and you, every time you take the test, it sends a signal back so that they can determine where the signals are weak and where the, where the infrastructure needs to be built up. Do you have such an app or test that Arizona County could use for cell coverage so that we can give you the most accurate information on where we lack cell coverage in our county?
There's, there's two things. If you look at the latter slides and the PDF that I sent, you'll see there's two, two things. One's called Open Signal, and that's actually an app that you can load on your smartphone. And what it does is when you, when you load that app, anytime you make a call or there's a connection, an email sent, a website search, anything, that, the phone will send that some information to Open Signal and will show that if it's a good call or a poor call. And you can actually zoom out and look at a very large area across the United States, but specifically in your county, you can look and see it, look at AT&amp;T subscribers where they have good and bad coverage, look at T-Mobile, good and bad, look at AT&amp;T, good and bad, Sprint, good and bad. So that's one thing, and that's down, if anybody that has a smartphone can, can download that, it's called Open Signal. If you go search, either Google Play or the i, iStore or whatever it is, you can look at that, and that's one thing. The second part is, there's a slide called Root Metrics, Current AT&amp;T Coverage. If you go, and you have to use Internet Explorer, I don't know why, but you have to. If you go to use Internet Explorer, you go to www.rootmetrics.com, you can actually go to the map, coverage map, I think is what it is, and you look at the network layer, you can pick what network, AT&amp;T, Verizon, Sprint, T-Mobile. You can look at the layer, call performance layer, you know, that's showed in the deck, it's the next to the last page, the last two pages. Next to the last page is call performance. It'll show you what, what Root Metrics looked, looked in your county when they did test drives and show you what each carrier's doing and what their performance is within your area of market.
Alright, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I don't have any questions.
No, I don't either.
Okay. Anything from plan, anything else from planning?
No, sir.
Okay. Planning approved it?
Yes, planning-
Everything through planning and meets all of the requirements.
They understood that it's in a high industrial, low industrial, commercial, residential area of the county, but that they met all the guidelines, the land use code of the zone property, so they voted unanimously to, to approve it, to go on to you guys.
Any more discussion? We'll now open this up to the public. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak to this item today on the tower, the Horizon Tower location? We'll close the public comment. I'd entertain a motion.
I'd move to approve the permit, the special use permit submitted by Horizon Towers Agent Shelley Neese from Primera for the purpose of developing a new wireless telecommunications facility and one hundred-foot monopole tower on property located at 6991 Road 24.3 Cortez, Colorado, consisting of 4.42 acres more or less, located south of Road G, west of Road 24.3.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that a high-impact special use permit submitted by Horizon Tower Agent Shelley Neese for the purpose of developing a wireless telecommunications facility and a hundred-foot monopole tower located on property at 6991 Road 24.3 Cortez, Colorado, consisting of 4.42 acres more or less, located south of Road G and west of 24.3. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, Steve and Shelley.
Thank you very much, and Don, thanks for keeping us on track. It's hard to read an audience when you're not there in person. And commissioners, thank you for allowing us to do this by, by telephone, we appreciate it.
Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thanks.
Okay.